Time being seven o'clock, I'll call Monday, January 27, 2020 meeting at the Oxford Planning Board to order. First on the agenda, plan is not requiring subdivision approval, we have one, I'll turn that over to our subcommittee chairman, Jeffrey Snapp.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, is Sean training here? Anyone here for this?
Mailing address is 30 Chestnut Street, Adamson, Massachusetts. Property information is assessed as 28 parcel A, 23.02, zoning history, not two. Property address location is in the area of 25 of Northwest of Brown, or Buddy Graham and Stephen. Everyone has a plan in front of them, it looks like he's just dividing parcel of public lot, changing the line a lot of ways. See if the issue with just moving the line is in the block.
What is parcel A going to be added to something?
It's going to be added to the bottom. Yeah, I think they, yeah. Looks like it's getting to the.
It may be a bottom name with Stephen Gerald Lee.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. So basically, he's moving the line on his current property at the house.
We make a motion that we consider the plan not requiring subdivision to.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, saying, carry. I'll turn the tap over to you, please.
Okay. I can run the limits. I don't have a lot of time to do much of anything I can. I'll just bring to everybody's attention that on Wednesday, there is a public hearing on the reconstruction of Route 20 in North Oxford, from the Auburn line up through the Charlton line. It's at the Oxford High School auditorium. It starts at seven, if anyone is interested in that. Just thought I'd say.
It's going to be a major disruption on the traffic flow of the end walk.
Yeah. It's, I think, at 25 percent development at this point. I don't mean, I wouldn't, they're talking late 2020 start.
That's what I heard, it's like fall 2020, it's a tough time to start building a little bit of a box.
Anyway, the time being 7:05, we have a continued public hearing, 191 Old Webster Road, application for a modification of a special permit, site plan review and approvals, stone water management permit, and land disturbance permit, applicant, SOA, project management LLC. How you doing, sir?
Sorry for being sick, I'm very well, how are you?
Is that what you're doing over there? Stay there.
Go back to your seat.
You have been shot lately, haven't you?
I had not. Thank you for being. I had a slide that I planned, I sent to Mary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This morning.
Got issues with anything like that.
I am here tonight, we've been going back and forth on the plans. Pedro submitted a plan on Friday to Mary, and then submitted final subplans yesterday for Friday.
That would be, that would be the.
What we did was we took everything, all the comments in there, put them all into the plans. And what I'm here tonight is to ask for the acceptance of those plans. Just to remind everybody, this, I'm not asking for acceptance of the facility, I'm just asking for acceptance of the plans that all of this incorporated, close the public hearing, and then we will be back in the spring because I have to provide you with grass. And I know that, and so I will be back here in the spring once we get up, once we get out there running and get established, and we can work out a way of how we get that sign off in the spring. So, we incorporated everything in there, a couple of notes, there's a compilation plan which shows some things that have changed in the back, it's sheet 10, which goes through where the roads were, where they are. There's a plan in there of where the tree line was, where the tree line is, where the fence was, where the fence is. There's also a call up on there that incorporates what we've talked about today, is that loan will be spread if we need it, but we're going to try to do the hydro seed. And if I can't get grass to grow with hydro seed, then we will spread loan on the bare areas. And we will get a sign off, and we will, again, in the spring, we'll talk to you guys about how we want to do that. You've clearly stated that it has to be 75 percent in a square area over a certain amount, I'm fine with that. I'm confident that we're going to get grass growing up there in the spring, so that's what I'm here for.
I thought it was pretty already.
We did, we did.
How's the stabilization going up there?
It's been. It's been fine.
We haven't heard from the neighbors.
No, it's been fine. So I think, as we've talked about in the past, what the problem up there, which was good in a sense, but bad in a sense, it was never erosion, it was volume. And so by increasing the size of the basin, adding that secondary basin, and getting everything away from the discharge location along that property line, we've taken that down. And now that there's some vegetation out there, it's not grass, but there is vegetation out there, it slowed that down, and it's gotten into the basin, and it's working the way it should.
Yeah, we've had some rainstorms.
We have. Now, I agree, and we're going to, I've told you guys before, I will continue to water it over the winter because the butters were concerned about a lot of snow, that then thaws and gets rained on. So as we get into February and March, as our snow starts to push, in general, I will respect that and make sure that we're still conforming with everything. And then come spring, grass, grass, grass. So, I also want to give an update, we are still not live. Nashville grid has been a challenge over the past couple of months, so.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah. So that's where we are.
You're just looking for us to accept.
I'm looking for the acceptance of those plans, I believe.
They got to be reviewed. We still have to have.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine. We can accept them, but we're not robotized.
But it's the last of whatever could be accepted through a public hearing. So I, 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 he's coming, he's going to come back anyway, and he's only on a temporary permit now to do what he's doing. I have no problem accepting the plans and.
Based on the approval.
Based upon the approval, and then run them up to Graves.
Yep, have Mary shoot us an amount that we get, and we'll get a check over to, that's the way we usually do it.
Is there anyone here for 191 Old Webster Road? I don't think so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
This was the only one piece of information we were looking for.
Yeah, everything, everything being on there, change, and so I said, all the changes made to the fencing, the road.
Everything's on there, everything that we've talked about with the submittals and incorporated, it's all on there. That's what's up there right now, it's an as-built drawing, but it shows it compared to what was originally. So that's what you asked for.
Based on Graves' review, I can't think, I have no problem.
Okay, so you make a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. Okay, seconded by Dale, further discussion. Like I said, this is a temporary till, what was that, April?
April. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Should we not pose a public hearing, and just wait for Graves' review, leave, leave, I mean, it doesn't matter. I don't think it matters to him, but it takes something from God.
Well, that's what we're saying, we base it on Graves' review.
Yeah, it's something that he hasn't seen. He hasn't seen.
He hasn't seen.
I think what, what I would suggest is just, I would ask to close the public hearing, just pending the Graves' review. If there's changes that need to be made, I will make them as we've accomplished everything and listened to all the butters' requests, and they're all in there, and as there are no other butters here tonight, I think it would be okay to close the public hearing and then take it off the public forum and get everything where we need it to be before this.
And just a little back, Graves has gone up and reviewed the site.
I know.
But, it's up to you, I, it's here and there.
Does it make a difference, what's the difference to you if we just say?
We'll accept the plan and have it reviewed.
Graves will review the plan.
It's just me coming back in two and a half or three weeks, whatever.
Well, nothing changes, and you get a copy, you get an email, like Graves' review is okay. We can deal with closing it without you being here.
I'm a, I'm a little bit of a freak, well, I will be here if it's still open.
You'll feel better by then.
Let's put it on the entertaining motion to continue the public hearing till.
Good time meeting. Well, I'm going to take Graves to. Will I go to the second, second meeting in February, which is.
I think, yeah, why don't we do that?
Is that the 17th or the holiday?
24th.
24th, yeah.
Entertaining a motion to continue this public hearing till February 24 at 7:05, is there anything going on on the 24th?
No, just not going on.
Okay.
What is we, you don't make it another suggestion? Seems like he might want to shoot from that next, next meeting. I mean, does it really hurt us if we put him on to the 17th, if we can knock it out, if not, we just.
I mean, whoever, they started Graves getting it done.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot of, it's what, he's seen it all before.
Yes.
So it would be a, the challenge would be getting money to cover it, just any help, which we can do, which I think that's not a problem.
Should be a simple.
Keeping the public hearing is affecting the operation. Right now, I know Mary, Mary is sick, she went home sick, next week she's on vacation, so I don't know what's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay, and the next meeting, she told us we couldn't even get packets in for the tent.
Okay.
Because she won't be here.
Okay, she, yep, she did mention now for this particular, she had mentioned February 10th, if it wasn't approved, she could put it on relax and figure it out.
Yeah, there's nothing to report, this, this guy's going to not get, take care of his cold by then, he'll be back here popping all over the place.
Yeah, we don't think Graves will get that done.
I don't think he's going to get it done.
I don't think he'll get it done, no.
Let's hope Mary comes in this week so she can at least get a dollar amount, so this.
Give you a dollar amount, right, and then I can, I don't know how much is left in the account, I think there might be something.
All I care about is the, the action date is to the 28th, so if it's on the 24th, I'm going to.
And that'll be back in April, otherwise you definitely don't extend it April anyway, what we got.
So you can hear it.
See you soon.
See you soon.
Okay.
Okay, so that still stands, 24th, we just, we just won't have one for this tent. Because I'm not sure I'm going to get anything for 10th, you know what I mean? It's going to take him a while to get these plans after he gets the dollar amount, we'll be given the work order to do it.
Right, if you don't dare to move to the day, you might want to contact Mary and make sure she's trying to get a price for it.
So she's up sick, she went up sick today, she's on vacation next week.
So call her.
So I'll get her, I'll get in touch with her this week.
So 24th, that's 7:05. 7:05, so I'll make that a motion.
Seconded by Dale, further discussion, be none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carry you here, see you then.
See you, mom.
Okay, at time being 7:10, we have a continued public hearing, 95 Lester Lot 1, application for stone water management, land disturbance permits.
Just from the Rock, Margaret Bacon, I'm an engineer with Civil Site Engineering. And after our discussions a couple weeks ago regarding stormwater management plan for Lot 1, I did reach out to Captain Sellers, got some feedback from him regarding driveway access for emergency vehicles, and then I also interviewed the Conservation Commission to, to discuss an alternative plan based on feedback I've got from the different boards. So actually, so there's three lots here. These two lots are under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, and I was going through stormwater with them. And then this lot over here is under planning board stormwater. And so, actually, after talking to Captain Sellers about having a certain driveway, certain width, and a certain grade, I noticed this driveway over here, for this lot up here, Lot 3, that's just in a way we can meet those standards. Okay, and so this, these jobs still are still in the permitting process anyways.
We just got Lot 1.
Right, right, so that's why I came up with a, actually, I thought of doing a common driveway, to see if the board would be open to a common driveway for two of these lots, for this one Lot 1, and then Lot 3 here. I could come right up here, I can do it 18 feet wide with three foot shoulders, which would give you a 24 foot width. I'd have to kind of put some curves in it in order to flatten it out, so I would stay at 10 percent or less. And then I could come up here and I could hit Lot 1, and then Lot 3 is right here, and Lot 2 in the middle here, I really don't need to do anything, I could stay as it is. So I wanted to present this, just as in draft form, just, just for discussion purposes, to see if the board would be open to allow a shared driveway for Lot 1 and Lot 3, and then that would eliminate all this work over here in the riverfront area, which I don't think I could get that driveway.
Yeah, I was going to say, how much wetlands and stuff like that, how much wetlands and stuff, even on Lot 2?
Lot 2, here, here's the 200 foot riverfront area, okay, here's the river right here, here's the 100 foot, here's the 200.
So you're going into that 200 foot for the common driveway.
But obviously, this would, this would reduce it quite a bit.
Well, Mary mentioned the fact that you were interested in a common driveway, but her approach would mean to withdraw without prejudice on one lot, and come back with the common driveway, and put in an application for a special permit for the common driveway, and show both lots as far as their stormwater management and everything else, including, you know, maintenance agreements and all.
Well, actually, the Conservation Commission asked if maybe to do the stormwater management and Graves' review for all three lots. All at once. And so I guess I really just kind of wanted to, before I really got into a real design and spent a lot of time, if the board would be open to a.
Now, we're, we're interested in having a better access for all three lots, so that's what, that, make that happen, and satisfy the grades, the grades that the fire department wants, and the widths, so be it.
Okay.
And then you, you know, you've got to create your common driveway, and we go through the special permitting process. And that includes, you know.
Sure, that are real design, I understand that.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, so, all right, so if I go through the special permitting process, I do a real design, and I do, I submit the stormwater, applications at that same time, too?
Yep.
Okay.
So are you interested in withdrawing?
Withdrawing the projects, yes.
I don't know if her form says that, you may have to write something down on a pad of paper.
Okay.
Just looking to see what forms I got. I got an extension form. It says nothing about the drawing, just an affidavit form, and I don't have anything for a withdraw without prejudice. So all you have, all you have to do is.
Write, write a, write a piece of tape, I mean, get a scrap of paper, and I can just write.
Do I have to buy it? Yeah. Captain Sellers. Are you, your measurement of your driveway width, that's 20 feet width, the problems?
Actually, under the subdivision or the town subdivision rules, it talks about the common driveway shall have an easement width of not less than 24 feet, and shall have a paved width of not less than 18 feet, except for there's wetland crossings, you can ask for less. So I'd have an 18 foot wide paved roadway, but then beyond that, three foot gravel hard pack shoulders. So it, it would actually be 24, 24 feet wide.
And I got a question, is a radius in there, is there a minimum radius you guys can deal with, too? I know you talked about a 10 percent slope, see how that got kind of like an S curve type thing?
I have the minimum radius here is 60.
Okay, that's.
The center line is 60 for radius.
Yeah. Yeah, that works, yeah.
Can I ask what, what is the maximum slope that the fire department requiring?
The maximum slope per NFA is 10 percent, we require eight. We request eight.
So what the town requiring, what's the town requiring?
It's 10 percent.
Okay.
Oh, I can get 10 percent, eight's going to be a little tough.
So the, the reason, just so that you're aware, the reason that we request eight is because of our power trust.
It's length first.
It's the length versus the incline, it bottoms out.
Even if it's a consistent?
If it's a, well, gradual is not, it's, it's immediate, like if you go, so if it's a gradual incline, it works.
It must be a certain length that.
Yes, yeah.
It tells me, well, to pre-arrange, the first 50 feet has to be 5 percent.
Correct.
So, so I'm trying to meet that, and like I said, it's going to take me some work to, to make this all work, but this is just for.
We had a very good conversation on the phone, she's, she's working with us, so I'm. So you'll have all that worked out with them before we get to the plan, right?
Yes, that'll make life a little easier, so once I have a real plan, then I'll touch base with.
Yep. But we, we've been telling everybody 10 percent. 10 percent is code.
If we could get a.
If we can get a, we prefer a.
Correct. You recommend a.
Recommend a, yes.
Except we've seen some come in at 22, somebody's. But again, it's all.
So anyway, you can just say, just.
Without prejudice.
We expect to see you in the future with.
Yeah.
Special permit for, okay, very good.
So, can I have that?
Sure. I am requesting that Lot 95 public hearing be withdrawn without prejudice.
Again, would that mean a maintenance kind of agreement for both parts, for both parties, when you do a common driveway?
Correct.
Yeah, you'll have to create some.
All right, so just a little.
Yeah, because they're both going to be using, who's going to take care of it?
That's correct, now, just one other quick question here, I don't know if the board has a preference, you see how I'm cutting through this middle lot right here? I don't, I don't know if the board cares, whether even the way it is.
Is that part of the lot, too?
Correct.
Just give them an easement.
Just get an easement.
You've got to give an easement through the land.
Or I can, or I can reconfigure the lot lines, right, like I said, if it doesn't really matter, then.
Easy, easy.
Right, all right, very good.
Anyway, requesting that.
On the property.
Requesting that the Lot 95 public hearing, it's in process, be hereby withdrawn without prejudice. They do today.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded by Dale, further discussion, be none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carry you here, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be in touch.
Okay, and the whole business, criminal estates, submission to Nashville.
Standing by. According to point engineering.
Yes, sir.
Double L, you know, you're blank.
Yep.
The double L has asked my, my office to prepare the plans that were submitted to the board for. Double L has asked my office to get involved in this, to try to get to the bottom of any issues that the board may have as far as what is occupancy of units.
Okay, at this point, we got the plan at the last meeting, and we requested that the building inspector review the as, as approved versus the as built, to see if there was any glaring issues. So I'll ask my building inspector to come on up, I didn't get anything right, I mean, I got nothing but a file yet.
You didn't, Mary and I did take a site visit, we spent some time looking at the plans.
That's right.
The biggest, there are some minor, in our opinion, differences. They extended one driveway to make it easier for one of the condo owners to be able to turn around, which was not shown in the original plans, but is shown in the as-built, doesn't appear to us to be negative in any way. They did change a grade at the back of that same one, they extended the flat area out a little bit from what was actually shown on the original plans, again, to make some accommodations for access. Neither Mary nor I saw any issues that were a negative impact, or any great difference from the plans submitted. The other item that I picked on, the numbers on the houses are only four inches in height, and the towns' general bylaw does require those street numbers to be 10 inch minimum, so there's some minor little things.
That's a big number, yeah.
It is in our general bylaws, and it was in your order of conditions that they be there, those were the most glaring things we saw.
But I know there was an issue with some erosion or something like that in the back of one of the properties, is that looked at?
As you go up Coal Road, there was a modification, in my understanding in talking to Mary, that had been discussed earlier on, they put riprap there instead of long, so that that area wouldn't erode. Kevin, as we go up Coal Road, the houses on the right that has riprap behind them, that was an earlier.
Yeah, what happened, there was a, that area, there was off-site water draining into the, to the project, and it was causing the rear of some of the dwellings to get saturated. So double L cut a swale to just intercept and divert the runoff away from those dwellings, which appears to be. That wasn't called for in the plan, my estimation is it's an improvement over what was done.
It's on the as-built, they made it do. It was not on the original, this was what we were going to do, but it was an area that they weren't able to stabilize, this is a workaround that they had come up with. I'm not an engineer, but it appears that it's stable, and it would be for the long term, it's better fixed than trying to keep grass on a slope that was too wet.
I got it with the desk. Thank you, sir.
I'll be here all night together.
I was just looking to see if we could march it down.
I, I know what you're looking for, I know what you're looking for, but they haven't done the site visit yet.
The what?
I thought they were going to.
They did a site visit.
They left that? I think that was.
Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah.
They looked at it, okay, and they, they reviewed the plan and now?
That's what we asked for. We've walked the site, I've walked the site twice, and, including last week with the town staff. What we found is that the site is predominantly in compliance with the plan. There are some minor deviations, some grading issues, some of the swales we talked about. The fence around the detention areas was not there. In fact, my office came for the board in 2013. In fact, my office came for the board in 2013, and the fence was removed as a requirement. The residents didn't want the fences around each of the four detention areas. Those fences were away. Duffy mentioned that driveway was adjusted to make it easier for the resident to back out of the dwelling and depart. That's different from what was on the approved plan. There's a... The detention basin on Coal Drive had a, this is great, they had a cast iron frame and grate that was actually stolen. And this is determined burglary, because these things are heavy, but there was a time when the metal's...
Tonnage, yeah, tonnage.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that has been, since been replaced. So can I answer questions before?
Put everything, all that's been put on the plan, on the as-built.
The as-built was prepared by, not by my office, but who looked at it.
Okay. Appreciate your reviewing it, because we have some history behind it.
And we had asked the building inspector to go up there and do a site, and he did.
And also, who were you now?
A Quinn Engineering. We're the engineer of record for the design department.
Okay. So you didn't do the as-built though?
We didn't know.
Usually, in the past, they've always wanted somebody else to do it over the third. So instead of us paying and paying, we just hired, so you got somebody overlooked outside of plan engineer.
So have you reviewed the as-built information based on the original design plans?
No. But what I have done is I've walked the site with the as-bills and verified that the site as constructed substantially complies with the plans. As I said, there's some deviations which we've listed. We submitted a report to conservation from a conservation perspective.
Yeah.
And the as-built, as far as I can tell, it shows what was constructed accurately.
So pipe sizes, inverts, everything's pretty much sloping the way it should slope.
We've not gone through every pipe and every invert elevation.
They wouldn't be able to, right now the dirt's covered up.
No, but the plans that you submitted have as-built inverted. We could check it that way.
Yeah.
If we had an engineer.
Yeah.
But we don't.
Well, we can certainly do that, that's what we're here for. But my understanding was that Duffy had been requesting to look at that.
That's all we had.
Yeah.
That's all we had. We didn't have your services.
It wasn't our, I was a little confused. If each unit, before we can get an occupancy permit, gets signed off by a conservation, what the hell, we can't, building inspector, plumbing inspector, they check all this, so we can't even begin to even get an occupancy permit. So it's like it's four or five times we check in this stuff with this as-built.
Those last two units were being held as leverage to get everything done up there. Someone said it was 12 years of in-making.
It is, it is. We should have walked away, not 10 years ago, but we didn't, because we live in this town and wanna make it right.
All right, that's fine. I'm not denying what happened here. I'm only telling you what the planning board did the last time you visited this board. We're looking for additional occupancy permits before anything was done. You know, we wanted to hold three, but you had somebody in going in for the third. So we decided, okay, we're putting a foot down, and that's it. You're not getting the last two until everything was done.
Okay.
So you're pretty much there now, which is good.
Yeah, yeah.
You are there, okay. As long as there's concurrences and everybody that is done, okay, I'm happy with that. Now, no one said at the last meeting that you'd have Quinn Engineering look at it. We wouldn't have had the building inspector look at it. But it's, you get other eyes on it. I'm trying to use the resources we have to us.
You're the only one that was here on the product study.
Yeah, I get you.
But I'm glad...
I'm not an engineer.
No, I'm glad the engineers, I'm glad you went there and looked at the site.
Me too.
So now this room isn't loaded because of anything else other than this project. Anyone wanna say anything? You have to come to the microphone over there, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ron Cuny, I live up on Daniel Drive, but I'm here to talk about the problem we see on Coal Drive. Behind condos 7, 9, and 11, the hill in the back, we contend that the distance from the end of the building to where the banking starts is a very steep banking, and we don't think it meets the plans that were submitted to begin with and as they were as-built. We're afraid that there's going to be erosion on that hillside. We were told that they couldn't do anything with that hillside because the conservation committee said it was in wetlands. We'd like to know when that was told to the builders, and do they have any proof that that hillside impinges on the wetlands behind the building, and why the banking couldn't be improved? We're afraid that on the corner, the fat corner on number 11, they have a deck that goes out, and where the pole goes into the ground, there's only maybe five feet before the hillside hits. If that hillside washes away, it's gonna wash away under that deck, and then could go further and even go towards the house. We need to know whether that, if they can do something, can get something from the conservation committee to get, you know, to get an okay to do more, could they put some kind of pylons in to strengthen that hillside? Because once it's approved, it's gonna fall back on the residents of Daniel Drive and Coal Drive to fix that if it does indeed wash away. And we're just wondering, I had submitted some questions to Mary Parriots last week, and supposedly the conserva, yeah, you guys were supposed to hopefully look them over. She was sending a copy also to the conservation committee, and we just wondered if you had any answers to these questions, you know?
Okay, well, the original engineer who designed it had the same wetlands in mind when he put these things in. I know you talked about the ripraps and...
That's not, the ones that he's talking, I believe, are behind 13, 15, and 17. This is the units 7, 9, and 11.
I have the letter that, I don't know if Mr. Cuny has sent this...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not signed or... The units he's talking about are Building 12, and the grade it's sloped in there is pretty much per plan. It does drop down immediately past the supports for the deck. I think the homeowner may have wanted an area out there for recreation, but it's beside the deck, not directly behind it. But that's per the plan. The wetlands are far away from, there's no wetland issue whatsoever in that area. It's a slope, and certainly at some point, if erosion takes place, it's gonna need to be maintained, but there's absolutely no reason that that wouldn't be stable. Now, when I've walked it, I've walked it twice, both times there was snow. So I can't report to this board or to conservation that no erosion has taken place because it's kind of under snow. But there's no indication of erosion, there's no erosion gullies, there's no deformation of the slope there where water, if it was rushing down, would have created a problem.
Okay, we were informed that it was a conservation committee decision that nothing else can be done to that hillside.
Well, you have an approved plan, and these guys understandably are reluctant to deviate from approved plan unless there's a logic or justification for it. And the slope there is stable. I mean, it's a stable slope. There's no reason that that slope cannot be maintained in a stable form.
I was just, that was my next question. How long? It's been there for?
Few years.
Two or three years. And you've noticed a significant fill was?
It had to be stable before it's their occupancy permit of the US.
That was one of the concerns that we had. I just don't know why it was informed to some of the people that it was a conservation committee. It was more of they want to spend money to approve.
But they do have a permit with conservation and with this board that shows what the approved plan is, and when they deviate from the approved plan...
Thank you.
I'm Carol Tedson, I live in number 11 Coal Drive, and there are gullies, and there has been erosion, and I have fallen in the gullies. And I got a letter from Craig saying that there would be 10 feet beyond the deck when the property was being built, and it's not because I want it for recreation, it's because I'm concerned. And when the surveyor came, he took pictures, and he agreed that eventually it would wash away, and this is my final home, and I'm concerned.
Okay.
And I don't think that the condo association should have to be required. Also, I came to Mary and I got the plan, and it said that I should have four inches of loom. There was never any loom put on the side yard or the front yard, and it was never seeded. All it is is natural grass from the woods. And I addressed that. I sent letters to Craig, certified, and they will return, and this is my last effort to get some relief. Thank you.
Who is Craig? Who are we talking about?
The building. The building.
So what does Craig have to say?
Come up and talk to him. We have those 30 dimensional...
Okay, I'll try to address, you know, last Wednesday when we had the inspection with the building inspector, I did go behind number 11. I explained to him the situation. Duffy, you come up and, rather than me saying what you seen up there behind you, we talked about the deck, the banking of the property. Did you see any sign of that deck gonna cave in or anything?
I don't see any signs. The deck is unstable in any way. There is four to five feet beyond the post at this time. Again, there was some snow on the ground, I didn't see the bankings. I left that more to conservation because that was the area that they were looking at. The grass, the depths of soil, I'm not an engineer, I don't... I know there's plans...
I mean, were there gullies up there? Did you see any?
I did not trip in any gullies, I could not walk through any gullies.
Okay.
I've done it, this, yeah. 7, 9, and 11 were occupied before I came onboard, but 11 did have a building permit to do some work in their basement, so I was there in that part of that. Again, it was during a snowy period, I didn't see anything, I didn't fall.
I'm sure what you're looking at.
This is at the rear of building 7, 9, 11.
This is today?
This is the floor of the grass behind the building.
That's number 11?
That's number 7, 9, 11.
7, 9, 11, okay, so it's that corner?
And if you look at the plan, the original plan, it's 10 feet off the building, these decks are 10 feet out in depth. The plan shows that the slopes start immediately at the 10 feet. We extended it, I'm gonna say six feet higher.
Sixteen, twelve, sixteen feet.
They had something to walk around with.
Sixteen feet, yeah, sixteen feet, yeah, it makes sense.
How steep is that slope?
Two and a half, three and a half.
Three and a half?
I heard he gave it to them.
Oh, you can't even go there.
This one's from the other side.
You got it, then that's from 11?
The original plan, the original plan that I saw showed that access to the back of 11 was from the side of 7, around the back, in and under the deck to get to the door. All the access that I did for inspection purposes, I went down beside 11 and in the back door to do inspections.
What I don't understand either is certified letters, I never received a certified letter lived next door. I was on the property just about every day, so I don't know how they got me to turn it.
I have the proof from the post office. I also gave the planning department several pictures the last time I came in. They did have them showing the gullies.
Looks like it's a precast structure. Maybe you could use a little bit more around there. But again, I...
This is a condo association now. These people have been in there a couple of years, who have signed off on that building, made their grass growing back when Sanus was the only inspector, you couldn't get an occupancy permit without grass. So that was one of them.
So this is...
So that was all done and signed off. Everybody signed off on it now. What's it gonna happen?
I kept asking when he was gonna move in. And he said I'm gonna do the other.
Just in the three years.
People that are talking have a second orders up there, they're coming up. The second order, the first order.
That's been there for three years.
Thank you.
All the years, the whole time. But that's... You can get occupancy, for those two, you know, so take care of the bank from the still, there's still a...
I mean, unless they, to me, like there was a flat, flattened area in the back.
We gave them more than we, and anything that went out of there, we had an approval from the building inspector, or whoever the town was when he needed to it.
I'm sure you did.
We have to build that unit, because we needed a solution. The water was coming up, the building near it was so bad, so I made the change.
Craig, do I need seven units?
Yeah.
If you don't want them, we'll throw them away.
That's so pretty black.
Most of the grass is up there to seed in there.
That's the side of it all.
Yeah.
Yes, I have the pictures of the gullies.
Got them?
I gave them to you last time.
You don't have them printed though.
No. She gave them to Warren.
Am I looking at this right here?
Yeah. Here, it's all like that. The whole thing, it's all divots and gullies.
But it's not, it's grass, it's not thick grass.
No, it's all divots. And I felt when I tried to walk back there, because it's never been landscaped, and I kept asking Craig when he was gonna come back, and he said when he did next door, he would do the rest of that.
Again, this was the, you had the second property on?
No, I'm the original. I moved in this month, it's three years now.
No, I agree with the fact there isn't enough loom there to sustain vegetation.
There's no loom, there's no loom.
What's happening is...
It's never been put in. He said...
Like similar areas where you don't have enough loom, it just, the water just channels and it pulls the...
Those were the ones I gave you the last time I came in. I don't know if you keep them, but I did, they did, were printed up for you.
So you're saying you printed them out?
No, I didn't, Mary did, I think. And if I'd known I needed more, I would have given you more.
Okay, please.
Yes.
That's what you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is my front yard, the lack of loom on the front.
You know, I've seen it many times since I've been on this board, you know?
I'm sure.
The landscaping is the last thing to come, and it's the usually skimped upon at the end.
I don't believe that was skimped upon. I don't believe three years ago that was skimped upon, or anything that was skimped upon, to be honest with you.
The plan says we're...
But downhill, right? The flat area that she's supposed to be walking on is all grass and seeded, she wanted a bigger gap, she's not getting there.
No, I'm not talking about the hill.
Because I couldn't, I don't particularly, we couldn't even get an occupancy permit segment because of banking there. So we had to seed it, hide it, seed it, do it over.
I never did.
Oh, she went up there with a shovel and made her own gullies.
I moved in in January, it wasn't hide seeded or a loom. I moved in in January. It wasn't hide seeded or loomed.
My opinion, we're looking at a plan. We're looking at an as-built, and they seem to be pretty much conforming to the plan.
Questions?
Okay, and that's what we do.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Come on up.
Can't even help, but it's mostly on grass and blacked out. I've got some documents here and questions and. I'm here tonight to advocate for the interest of each and every condominium unit owner in the Twin, of the Twin Elms Neighborhood Management Trust. Oxford only, fifty-five-plus community. Whether it's in God's plan that I should spend my remaining years in Oxford at St. Crox Parish, I don't know. But morally and justly, I must speak out for my current neighbors' interests. It is in my nature to do so, as I did both in Framingham and Oxford, saving municipalities and taxpayers thousands and even hundreds of thousands of dollars. I've served municipalities and their citizens unpaid as a selectman, a town meeting moderator, a finance committee member writing town budgets. That was for fifteen years. And a personnel board member. In other words, I understand municipalities. I understand what you're going through. And I want to say, first of all, thank you very much for doing this. So many towns now are having difficulties finding people to serve on these boards. Twin Elms is now in transition. We now have four trustees. Two are residents on Daniel Drive, north Oxford. One lives in Charlton. And the senior trustee lives in Florida, Gary LeBlanc. Ricky LeBlanc, Gary's brother, has never resigned in accordance with registry of deeds requirement. He, as a trustee, authored the Twin Elms Declaration of Trust, which created our situation up there to start with. And he's never filed a resignation. So according to the registry of deeds, he is the fourth trustee. If our trustees have addressed or will address this meeting, I request that they let us know, us being the residents up there, at which trustee meeting they approve their present positions. Why? Why do I want to know? Well, the reason for this request can be found in six issues presented in my letter to you dated today, which I have here for you. Specifically, numbers one, two, three, five, and six. Remedy of these issues by unit owners would be unjustly expensive. So the issue is, before you close out to announce and have no more authority the decision as to who is going to bear the cost of these problems. Before we address issues two and five, I would address you.
Do you have copies of those for us some?
Yes, sir, I do.
Please give them to us before you start talking about.
Well, I only have one copy for, for all of you.
I'm trying to take a photocopy of my, my. I've heard about the issues between trustees and, I've had a chance.
Shannon, issues between trustees and, you know, legal issues, they're not planning board.
Understand. I was gonna get to that. Please, please. The issues are with the developer, who is the senior trustee and the only trustee according to his own documents, who has the authority to file certificates with the registry of deeds. The other trustees, window dressing, window dressing. Anyway. I'd just like to bring one thing to your attention while I'm here. It's very short. I address your early concern you had about fires and the adequacy of water to fight the fires up there and the availability of water. Well, if there were to be a power failure in that area, there would be no water. The wells would be inactive. There'd be no pump. The devices, the simpler systems wouldn't mean a thing. If we had a fire. So maybe one thing I would suggest that you might be able to look at, if not now, before we're out of this discussion, the, having them mandatory generators, GenRec. I had one in Sutton. They're great. So if you have a power failure, you still have water. You can't even flush the toilet. We've had power failures. You couldn't flush the toilet. You couldn't run the sink or anything. But, so in areas like this, it's quite important that you consider GenRecs for, to alleviate the problem. And because issue five and related question two in the documents affect each and every Twin Elms unit owner and may be the most costly, I believe that you really should address this now, probably. Issue five in the document I gave you.
We don't have it. We still say you gave it to us. We don't have it. That's why I asked.
Did I give you a copy just now?
Sir, sir, we're looking, sir. We're, we're trying to do an as-built plan. Can't change the original. Can't change the original plan on fires, but, yes, you are. You are. You're suggesting. No, you're suggesting to us. You're suggesting that the fire system.
In the future, you consider this when you're, when you're approving.
That's not what you said.
I apologize if I misstated it. Okay? I'm not trying to cause an argument.
No. Again, we're, we're, should be sticking to an as-built plan, sir, not.
Okay, your as-built plan. Your as-built plan requires two issues, which I have in my notes for you. Two issues. One is four inches minimum topsoil, okay? Four inches of minimum topsoil.
Yep.
In some places, about an inch.
Sure.
Okay? You can't do anything about it right now. Because in a great many areas, you have snow covered. But in other areas, you can look at it and see that maybe an inch of topsoil is there, but not four inches. Four inches is in your original qualifications for the building of this place, okay? For your plans. It's in your documents, okay? There is not four inches. Four inches topsoil. You would have to go on and measure that area, and you would have to put in the topsoil. And that would be quite expensive.
And so, three years ago, when these were being built, three years ago when these built and when inspectors were going on.
No, no, my place was.
No, uh, just, just, in effect, all that would have been checked out by the inspector, the building inspector.
I'm sorry, the last, the last, it was been done in the last year.
No, the last two, yes. The last two we're looking at, yes.
The last two units?
Yes.
But that whole area up around even the third unit there, number seventeen, that was done in the last year. That's not something.
And, and again, there's been a inspector up there that will be looking at that, that long. And, and.
I did not check soil decks, any of them.
I know.
If I'm a miss in that. Uh, my anticipation was, when we got the as-built, it would indicate levels of loom and those types of things.
That was, but you weren't here three years ago.
Right. But last year.
That soil wasn't there.
Seventeen. I did inspect four so far.
But that, at that time, that soil wasn't there, okay? The, the other thing, and the thing which is most important to me is, once you've released the occupancy permit for this, at that point, you're out of it with respect to our unadjusted warranty issues which still exist. The trustees know about it. Just got an email from them last week that they want to look at one of mine. But, but, the big thing is, our documents that created this whole place stated it is mandatory that they establish a working capital fund funded by two months condo fees paid in advance at the purchase of the properties, okay?
Again, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop and say, what does that, that's not our purview. That had nothing to do with an as-built plan.
Yes, it does. Because when you approve that, when you approve that, the developer is out of there, and those problems will still exist. There were two months condo fees paid in advance at the purchase of each unit, which according to the documents creating Twin Elms was to go into a working capital fund. I have an email, and you see it right there. I gave it to you, from one of the trustees stating that that fund was never established. And as a matter of fact, they put the fund, which, the contributions onto that from unit seventeen, last unit sold up, up there. They put those into the reserves. That document states that in addition to the reserves, this working capital fund must be established. It hasn't been, and all of that money that's been contributed by everybody on Daniel Drive, everybody on Cole Drive, has been spent elsewhere for something else.
There's still a matter.
What are you saying?
That has, again, we're looking at an as-built plan. You have a breach of a contract. That's a legal issue. It isn't a planning board issue. Okay, there's a lot of things you've raised.
Well, the thing is, and once you let them go, it becomes a matter where we have to sue them.
We're looking at a plan. What do you expect the planning board to do? Just keep this thing rolling on until someone fixes it for you?
You withheld, quit proposed. You withheld the last two units in order to ensure certain.
To make sure that you had a, had a finished road, to have finished sidewalks, to have everything finished.
To have four inches of topsoil. To have the ten-inch numbers. Neither one of those two exists right now. And if you pass this on, you're passing on the debt to the, to the people that live there, the people who paid their money in and had it misappropriated, misspent. So it is related. It is not totally independent. It's dependent upon the existence of those occupancy permits. If those occupancy permits are issued, you're putting a real burden, and you're putting people in jeopardy of a lawsuit. And the developer now, he lives in Florida, okay? I don't even know if he communicates for the purpose of the meetings that our current trustees have. They may call him up on the phone. I don't know whether that's legal or not. I don't know. And I don't think that Ricky LeBlanc has ever been consulted on that. They don't even think, the people up there don't even think that he's a trustee. If they read their own condo documents.
Ricky LeBlanc is not a trustee, by the way.
Excuse me?
He is not a trustee. Now, he's aggrieved by a high attorney.
He, he did not resign.
He, he, he resigned.
There is no, there is no.
Not a planning board matter.
There is no registry.
That's not a planning board matter, so take that elsewhere.
Well, if they're listening to the trustees, they have to listen to three out of four. That's the majority. Anyway, those are serious problems at Twin Elms. And if you.
I assume that the fire department is happy with the fire suppression systems that were put into this project?
Oh, absolutely. They, they have suppression systems in ECO. One hundred percent. They've all been tested. They've all been timed.
They, they work great.
Well, they work great.
As long as you, as long as you've got electricity. You haven't got electricity, you haven't got water.
Under the cover code, they, they are acceptable.
Okay. So they haven't asked the generators put into these facilities to deal with the fire? Yeah?
Right.
Okay. And if they do, then they would be part of a plan to do it.
There's one more issue in the document that I gave you. That's the fact that there was a patio built recently.
I don't know anything about patios.
Oh, well, it, it.
It has nothing to do with the planning board. Understand. I don't think there's a patio put on that plant. Okay, it's not even put on the as-built.
But it's there now.
Okay.
And they're charging, they're charging the homeowners fees for that. And our documents which created us, which you created the documents, stated that in order to put any improvement on common property, it has to be a vote of the unit owners. There was no such vote.
Jurisdiction.
Huh?
That's not our jurisdiction here. We're just here to do the plan.
Well, you're here to represent the taxpayers in Oxford.
We're here to represent the neighbors, the, the use of land versus what neighbors were there at the time, and as you said, it's one of the only fifty-five and over developments here. It was a special permit at the time. They supplied a plan.
Yes.
Okay, they executed the plan.
No, the four inches of topsoil is not in yet.
Listen.
That's part of the plan.
I don't know. I'm not gonna get into topsoil right now. I, I hear, and I've seen other developments that went, go that way too, okay? We just had a, you know, a solar plate that was supposed to have six inches of loom. And guess what? There's areas where there's zero, okay? And we're, we're dealing with that too, okay? But on the other hand.
You're gonna deal with our four inches?
I can't deal with your four inches, are they?
It's in, it's in your requirements that you issued for this place. You don't have the four inches. You're not meeting the requirements of your document, which you created.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we can't approve your plan because you, you don't have four inches of topsoil like it was supposed to have.
But he's saying that, right?
Yeah.
So he's, he's holding me up from this development because he's telling you that I don't have four inches of topsoil.
Well, I saw some pictures that indicates there.
It's down the bank. Okay, the plan states four inches of topsoil average, okay? I had eight and some.
No, it says a minimum of four inches. It doesn't say average.
So, okay, if you're not gonna approve me, please don't approve me. Let me move. If you're gonna approve me, please approve me. So we can follow it. I didn't, I did the as-built. First off, we hired an engineer to design the property. Then I built it. And every, we were being built, an engineer came up to us, built for the foundation. That's what we're doing now. Then I had inspectors come out and do all the inspections. I have the, the, uh, Rockford Health come out and inspect the storage building. Everything's been signed off. Then I go to occupancy permit, and they, and we've been denied because we didn't have our. We looked through the, the plan. Just we were denied at times when Sanz was building inspector. So we had to put more. We hired, we seated. Then we hire an engineer for thirty-two thousand dollars last month to look over what has already pretty much been inspected by every town official that's on the board, been up there. We did it. We submitted that to you people, okay? I've had Kevin Quinn here today. They went up, looked at it with. Tell everybody's telling you, we built it the way we should have built it. I'm looking for an occupancy permit for two units. If you don't want to give it to me, that's your decision. But based off of his talk and other people's talk, there's seventy people up there, maybe? We have, what, five at the waiting? So I'm asking you for an occupancy permit based off of the information that I've got.
We're in the last area to be completed. So the, the other people really don't, don't have an interest. But they should have an interest in their working capital fund, which is in this.
I'm not gonna go there. Don't bring it up again. You're gonna be in, I'm going to court on that, okay? Because it's your court documents. It's, it's your documents as a condo owner's association. Planning board doesn't get involved in that. Never has.
The original authority that built it came from.
We had, they had to create a condo association. They had to create those things. They did, okay? I know nothing about your working capital fund, okay? From a, from a planning board member. I know nothing about it, okay? You say there's a problem, okay? There may be. I don't know. You're not even, you're not even a trustee. You're hearing from other trustees.
Because, because the trusteeship resides with double L realty.
Okay, that's the way the documents were set up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can three other board members that have a lot of double L.
There's what?
I just like, I am a trustee, and.
I just like, I am a trustee, and we have spent over $4,000 fighting this man on what he comes at us with, and the attorney has justified everything we have done, so we're actually comfortable with that.
The only one I'm not, is their attorney that says these are the working documents they have received.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Thank you. You've done a great job.
My own, my own, I'm sorry, bring it up. I got a problem with the loan, as Gary said, he's been checking, he's been caught, he's been fixed it, I'm just gonna go with the loan was put in the way it's supposed to be, because there's nothing else we can do. You know, we had the building inspector who'll check it.
Three years ago.
So, what is, so just, what is it deal with the signs?
With the what?
Oh, the, oh, the ten-inch, the ten-inch.
Yeah.
So, that's a funny thing, because I haven't, as a, at the time, you've never heard of that. You need to go put the numbers on the house. Usually, it's the fire department that reminds us to put the numbers on the house. So, hearing the ten-inch numbers, that's the first.
Fire department's right there.
Did you change?
Did you approve?
What if a homeowner was all up there? Was it, what they did?
I'll change mine, I just never.
What if a homeowner?
I don't know. So, ten-inch, that's big.
I actually, I actually just had a conversation with Duffy, because we, through 911, it's the emergency communications, the required numbers on residence are four inches. When I look at that, I look at that as a residence, not looking at it as a commercial property. It's a condo, so by the town bylaws, technically, they're supposed to have ten-inch numbers. But when I look at it, it's, it's a residential neighborhood, it's a 55 and older community, so yes, I have been approving the four-inch numbers, because in my mind, they, they meet the requirement.
Well, if the, if the fire department is gonna take responsibility for the wrong size numbers, I'm good with that.
No. A resident can put whatever number they want, they could take that ten-inch one down, I don't want this.
Ten-inch numbers down, they're gonna take that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, your thoughts pay.
That's for you.
Any commercial property. Senior housing or something.
I know, but sometimes you come up, you put the numbers on the house, and then you forget again.
I got a condo right on my street, they're not ten-inch signs there.
No.
If I could throw in, the building code, Massachusetts State Building Code requires ten-inch. I have looked at some of the others myself and said, yes. When I heard that there was an issue with the numbers, I scratched my head, I went through the town's general bylaws and found it, and Mary said it was in your ordered conditions, and that's the only reason I got to it. Ten inches, you know.
Happy to put up ten-inch numbers. You're gonna take them down?
We don't care.
I don't even own them now, I'm gonna fight them to it.
We've taken down the next day.
I'll do it around two, get the two units that are, no, they change, we're playing all of the ten-inch numbers.
I'm not interested in that. Can we, can we?
I'll make a motion that we approve the as-built plan, conditioned on hearing from a building inspector and all the other departments.
Well, you already heard from it.
Yeah, we have, based on what the.
Based on what he said tonight.
We're approving the site. Is there a second? Second by Roger? Further discussion? There being none, all was voting in favor, opposed, extensions, carried unanimously.
I'd like to say I'm gonna miss the board on this project, but I'll be in front of his honor, so defend while you're here.
I understand.
And I will say, the board is gonna be attacked.
Thank you, appreciate it. The mission of an as-built.
Oh, you gotta get the building, okay.
What's the high stop signs?
Okay, so the building, you know, the stop signs, seven feet to the bottom of the sign, that's the, Mary.
I got a technical question.
Please leave the room, please. They only have four sides of the parking lot with stop signs, and it's also painted on the top, stop, stop strike.
That's, that's no good for the stop sign.
Yeah, but in the other end, in one of the buildings that we have there, there's no stop signs at all, where the street goes across the middle of the parking lot, that's on the as-built and on the approved lands. So, the stop signs are there where it's just, not part of my permit, and part of a.
It's still wrong.
It's still wrong.
Well, seven feet to the bottom of the sign, there's a twenty-foot stop sign that's written that I, that I've seen, I've tried to find.
I understand, you put them in a place where no one sees them. You didn't, maybe the other guys did, because you know, they were trying to get away without putting those islands.
Yeah, so consequently, the stop signs, the bottom of the stop signs are nine feet, and then there's a twenty-four inch sign underneath, some of them, so I guess they kind of did it for uniformity when they did that, that was prior to.
I'm just saying, that, that's happening, because you're in a normal car.
You can't see them, except if you look up.
If you do this, you could see them, but I mean, if you're, you can't.
Also, if I put them at seven o'clock at the top of those, those parking lots, where the handicap parking is for the vans, those vans will actually block those signs from traffic, and that's specifically designed for handicap vans.
Yeah, and I could see those too, but not, those signs are all over the place, and I, I know you're saying it's nine feet to the bottom of the sign, so two feet, so you're talking 11 feet high stop signs, and I've never seen on a road or anything like that with the stop signs at 11 feet high. Yeah. He's not there, isn't there a code for this? I thought there was. Why are we trying to guess?
But he's saying no.
I'm seeing, I, I've looked into the, I haven't seen a maximum height on the sign, but also, it's not my designated work area, I've had no work in that area, mine was specifically a road through the bottom end, I've done no other signage on the job, and only the OGP with my approved plans. Now, there's a separate job going on there that needs separate approvals from you guys, and separate voting on that, on their portion of the work. That permit is still open, so whether or not.
What, what did you do?
I did specifically, I actually need the approval on the as-built for the parking lot of work that I did.
Well, what work did you do? That's what we're asking.
Specifically, the islands of the OGP parking, which I, I provided them to marry the.
Yeah, so, so you're talking about, you put the cement, the cement, yes, the cement barriers and stuff like that.
The islands.
Yeah, the islands, and you painted some, painted the signs on the, stop signs on the road, something like that.
Yes.
The directionals and stuff like that, the side, the pickup only.
And no problem with that, okay? But I think, right, at a time when there were nothing here, they put these stop signs in that are grossly too hot.
And this has been brought up.
And I brought it up, I, I've brought it up before. Somebody's gonna take responsibility for that.
Are we, are we, he's before us for the work that he did, right? We're not, he's not giving us an as-built for the entire parking lot, right?
Yeah, I think that's what it ends up being, is the entire parking lot.
The as-built shows, obviously, the entire footprint of the parking lot, it only identifies the areas that I did the work, there's no special, but I'm.
How can we address, how can we address getting the stop signs correct?
I think we need to, I think we need, we need to send a letter, we did, to Walmart.
We did. I know, I know, I guess there's something that's gonna be coming up about redressing signage at certain businesses that don't need qualifications, and Ian Duffy, they had signs up to the taxes, they had signs, little flags up.
I don't know on the side.
We talked to the manager, had all that taken down, so that's.
What is, that's your design plan right there?
This is the original design plan.
Okay, can you look at the detail sheet and tell me what the specification is for the stop sign?
I have none, I have no stop sign installations.
They were in those islands.
Yeah, they were in those islands.
So, I mean, I have my quality areas for specifically the work zone that I did my work in, and then again, there was another project going on at the same time, a different remodel.
Yeah, that was in that building, though.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, I, I specifically remember bringing this up when the renovations were going through, that those stop signs had to be changed.
What does it say for the stop signs?
I have none of the stop signs. The only signage I have.
We have the, we have the building, the building inspector's there, and he's put it up.
They were too high.
And I'm willing to bet that all those stop signs would be in violation of our new sign.
In violation of what?
The sign law.
Our sign by law?
Being the incorrect signs. Nope.
On this project, as the gentleman states, there are two open building permits. He has an open building permit for work inside, which I have verbally told him, I'm okay with the work inside, to sign off, is that being complete. However, there's also another building permit there. I have a meeting with Adele, the state building inspector, tomorrow morning on other issues, but we will be talking so that we can schedule a visit to Walmart for some issues that we have state building code-wise, and we will be talking to the managers at that location once I can make a date with Adele to go up there, so we can walk through, as the state building official and myself, and ask for corrections. Your stop signs is on my list that we will be addressing with it, because it wasn't in the clouded areas of his scope of work. Okay. The only issues I had with his scope of work, and I brought it to his attention, the people plowing the parking lot have scarred some of the painting that was required by you. At the time they were done, it was there, the plows messed it up.
No, specifically the.
And I don't know if we had, you know, we've done this before, we're putting a agreement where those have to be done yearly or even bi-yearly, I don't know if that's in those plans or not.
I, no, I don't have, I don't have any type of meetings, unless, I mean, unless that's something that's done directly with Walmart as far as maintaining the parking lot.
That's something.
No, I, if the building inspector's gonna deal with Walmart, he gonna mention that?
Typically.
I'll accept the fact you had nothing to do with it.
My warranty would encompass one year, so that might be something that would come up as a warranty issue under, you know, under a punch list, maybe if, if that's called in at some point, but if you guys notify Walmart about that, Walmart would have no choice but to notify us as well. So, that could be addressed in that way, but I think that would be more of a maintenance thing rather than our direct approval for the as-bills.
So, Rich, in terms of what he's here for, for the work that he did?
Yeah.
See if I get this straight, the building inspector, he did everything that he was supposed to do? I know that.
Inside and outside, I believe he's in compliance with plans submitted and the work done. There is.
Notwithstanding the plow messed up his paint, paint a little bit, but he built it the way he was supposed to build it. That's the question to you.
Yes, he built it the way they submitted, it was inspected before snow, it was inspected again last week with him, and I had the comments to him last week that the plows have damaged some of his signage that's required.
All right, then I'll make a motion that we approve the as-built plan that he submitted, and I think the stop sign thing is obviously a different issue.
Yeah, it's ongoing, and the building inspector has it on his radar, so let him deal with that. I know they were there at the high, at high date prior to you doing your work, I do know that.
I mean, did what the other reasons, you know, with no curtain around?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the, I'm gonna let the building inspector duke it out with the officials of Walmart.
It hasn't proved what was put to the table.
Oh, yeah, it delineates a road, a road going across a parking lot that has parking on both sides. It does delineate that, and that's what we were after.
I second your argument.
Okay, further discussion? There being none, all was voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried unanimously. We're not gonna, oh, okay, one more thing. Everyone got a copy of Mary's solar bylaws? The only thing she requested for tonight was a vote to request a warrant, a warrant for the zoning bylaw amendment for the 2020 annual town meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Well, everyone's ready to go.
That needs to go on.
Okay, all those, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried unanimously. Okay, now, I see we have the chief, and I was, took my place this, and Cessels came in, and at one point, I referred to him as the chief, because that's all I ever saw. It's okay.
He fires.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, gentlemen, I just, in, in the last year that I've been here, we've been, I've been working under the tutelage of Deputy Chief Boe Andrew, who is the acting chief. We now have a new full-time chief, Chief McDonald, I wanted to introduce you to him so you could put a name to a face.
Okay. Nice meeting you, sir.
And you're not acting, you're real.
Yeah, he's not acting. He's not acting, he's, he's got all a headache.
And Captain Cessels has been doing a wonderful job, especially with his board, he's one of the.
The planning board has a good relationship with the fire department. Sometimes we have questions, they responded, and we can't do our job without you and the other department, so.
And he goes above and beyond, so we appreciate that.
What else could we say?
Duffy's not too bad either.
I'll take that as a thing. Nice meeting you.
Thank you, looking forward to working with you, and looking forward to maintaining that good solid work in the league.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I said all that long. You see how we offer interesting.
Okay, we have some submissions. 125 Southbridge Road, application for a special permit, site plan review and approval. Advocate Havens Extracts LLC. Come on up.
Come on up.
We thought we'd tell you, Karen, Larry said we didn't need to be here.
No, you didn't need to be here, we're gonna, we're gonna schedule all that stuff. I'm glad that I saw your new plan that shows the delineated parking, I thank you very much for that.
Well, that was thanks to Quinn.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're not making any changes to the outside of the building.
Yeah.
We're just doing a, a minor build out to the inside, to the best space, and we have no customers, so it's, there's no parking issue.
Everything's existing.
No traffic, no.
Yeah, no, it sounds like a good fit for the building.
So, this is right on move 20 on the corner, 56?
No, this is, this is in the, this is in the industrial.
Go further down.
Okay.
The one, the one you're talking about is gonna be marijuana sales.
Yeah, this is, this is strictly a manufacturer.
I got you.
With a distributor, I take it, you distribute your own stuff after you manufacture?
We just manufacture, we take the plant material and then make it into like edibles.
Yeah, but then where's it going? Is it distributed?
Isn't it a lot of distribute to one place and not separate from that?
To retail stores around Massachusetts only. Only in Massachusetts. So, they have to have a license.
You put in Colorado.
Yeah, just, and so we don't have any customers, and we actually deliver the products, so that one's a thing.
Right, so you distribute, you manufacture and distribute right for those two buildings.
Well, we just have a small, it's just a real small 2,000 square foot space, we're just a small company, so. We've got a gourmet, edibles type thing.
So, this is an as-built?
Don't go there.
We'll go there.
It's an existing building.
It's an existing building.
It's sort of like we did last week, we have an existing building with a new use.
And the new plan has.
What are the grades on the parking lot? What is it? It's like, is there a big, is there a big valley in the middle of it, or?
We're only going into the front building towards Southbridge Road, we're only gonna use the 2,000 square foot section, it used to be Circuit City.
Oh.
It's the 2,000 square feet right in the front.
Circuit Barn.
Circuit Barn, they did, they did recycle.
That's one of my books. It's right after the manufacturing.
That building? Building.
It's kind of a green, green and white, kind of light, real faded green.
It's before Boulder Industrial Park.
Yeah, right before, yeah.
You know that driveway for Boulder?
Yeah.
It's before there, you'll see it's up on the hill, so.
Yeah, Ron Don, he has an HVAC, it's Ron Don, he's building, and he has his HVAC in the back, and we're doing it on 2,000 square feet, kind of toward the, toward the road.
We had approved this plan maybe, what, two or three years ago, Rich, for that building?
The building itself?
I know the buildings are there, and so is the parking, so you have plenty of parking, which I was glad to see. Entertained a motion to accept this submission and to schedule a public hearing for...
No, we gotta make, we gotta get a day.
So I think it's the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yes.
At seven-ten?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, I'll make a motion.
Oh, wow. You really wanted to.
Roger gets second.
Roger gets a second.
All those voting, all those voting in favor? Aye.
Carried unanimously. So since it's, it's pretty straightforward, I don't think we ought to go for engineering study on everything's there.
No, yeah, but...
Basically running through other boards.
I think just letting the public know that something's going on.
We had a public hearing at the library already.
Oh, you did? How'd that come?
There was no interest, there was... Because we don't have any kind of traffic.
Yeah, yeah, you're not going to sell. Somebody is looking for a sales facility.
And you said, two thousand square feet, you can't do a lot with that.
Yeah, well, and there's, so there's going to be, what kind of invisible to the public? We don't even need to sign, it wouldn't be a fire department. But we want to meet you, I'm Tom Dunn, and this is my son Brandon Dunn. It's a family business, so we actually work there.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the twenty-fourth.
See you on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, we got one more? We've got a submission.
Thank you.
We've got a submission for a, another building in the industrial district. So they build it next to Wetland, so obviously it's going to be going through conservation.
Well, it's good for us. Do with the site plan and...
Anyway, entertain a motion to accept this submission and schedule a public hearing for seven fifteen, on the twenty-fourth of January. You'll make that a motion, right?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's not for seconding. All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Thanks for making me...
Carry unanimously. Okay, that was it. Come on, Christie.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Carrie unanimously.
Me. I used to make the motion.